The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever. The first thing tonight is public hearing on local law number four, one-year moratorium on adult entertainment. I open the meeting to the public for comments at this time. Anyone wish to comment this time? I close this public hearing. I open the second public hearing on local law number five, one-year moratorium on subdivision of three or more lots of parcels for certain parcels and tracts of land. That's from certain parcels, I'm sorry. And that is open for discussion. There be no need to address the board, I close the public hearing. I need a motion on local law number four if you want to do it now. You have it. Second. Motion by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard. There be no discussion from the board. There be no discussion, this is a roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
In the mayor votes aye. Local law number five.
I'll make a motion that we pass local law number five establishing a one-year moratorium on the acceptance of applications for the issuance of building permits for the subdivision of three or four lots or parcels from certain parcels or tracts.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Pentfield, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? There is no discussion, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. I open the meeting at this time to the general public for comments. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so at this time.
Hi, Lynn Charlier back again. I was here, I think, last month about my project called Metal's Edge at the end of Ross's Point. And tonight I have delivered to Carol a letter with my intent of my project. And to kind of sum it up, I've applied for three building lots, calling that phase one for this current year. And then the balance of the lots, which would be another 13, will come sometime in the future. And just to let you know that that's where I am and letting you ask any questions of me that you might have too. I understand that there's going to be a year that you have to be notified of any future.
That's correct, once the local lots file.
Right, right.
I think it'll be like two or three months down the road from back in the state.
Okay, so, do you have any questions with me?
Well, I understand that there's some problems up there.
Are there?
Yes.
What's that?
Basically water line.
Oh, okay, all right.
And I think, I think that we've, we've done some research and I believe that eight-inch line that is on your property going out with the hybrid up the road is still yours. That was never turned over to the village or never given a need.
Oh, you mean, yeah, on Oakwood property?
On Oakwood.
I don't own that property anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, then I'm sorry.
Yeah, I sold that in January, so you might not have been aware of that. And I sold it to C&amp;P Properties, it would be Jeff Peck, Neil and Diane Cohn. And what I think we're in the process of doing right now is getting it turned over. That is your intent, to have it turned over to you, is that correct?
Well, this is the problem, if you add a, you have a problem with that line at this point. Sure problems.
I've spoken to Jeff Peck, who's the new owner, and he has no qualms at all about, you know, tossing that up to the village.
And the other thing is, is where, if you're thinking about connecting across the street to that water line, there's, it's only a four-inch line and we don't own that, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
You mean, across the street?
Well, yeah, directly is.
Cross Smith or across?
Ross Smith.
Oh, I'm not planning on coming that direction. I'm planning on coming, if, this is not my forte right here. What I think is happening is, is I'm coming across from Oakwood, picking up on Oakwood. Right, the sewer, the sewer, I think, you don't happen to know that?
I'm, no, I'm not, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, he doesn't know. Everything's coming over from Oakwood.
Ryan, did you add anything to that?
The village water line pretty much stops by the driveway.
Right.
It's on the south side of the street.
Correct.
Then it continues up the street to private line owned by residents toward the end of the village, Mr. LeBourne. Outside the village limits, they own, they hate to put that water line in, and they own it. So if anyone taps onto that water line, you'd have to give permission from them and then we're talking about digging up the road.
Should be the water line on Smith Street itself?
On Smith Street.
Oh, I, I'm not coming in that direction.
Yeah, it sounds like, and I'm way outside of this, so I'm not sure. It sounds like Doug and Dale are probably working with tech associates to see what they have to do to get that eight-inch line turned over to the village and make sure it meets the requirements of the village. And then they're going to try to connect to that eight-inch line that's going on Oakwood. But again, I'm, I'm way on the outside, so I'm only supposing what I believe.
And I spoke to Jeff and he's more than willing to toss up that water line, that isn't an issue.
The problem with the water line is, no one actually knows where it goes. We know it goes from town A where it's connected to the hybrid, the fire hydrant, that's the only place you know where it's connected. Now, if it's considered a dead-end water line, which doesn't go anywhere, you know, that causes another problem. You're trying to eliminate the water, dead-end water lines and make, put a new system in. So I don't know how they're planning on connecting, as it is, the water lines are private property, so.
Well, that, that would be the process of identifying, like what you're saying about it being a dead end. One, what's requirements to get it turned over to the village? And one of the requirements, obviously, is we don't want it a dead end, so what's, what's the remedy to make it so it's not a dead end?
Right.
And I believe Doug is in the midst of that, identifying, one, with the present owners, what they're willing to do and what they're not willing to do. And then go into the village as representative of Mrs. Charlier and say, okay, this is what our plan is.
Well, as due development, we would have to have some kind of a plan on what our intentions are to go, you know, to extend that water line. Where it's going to be connected, the size of it.
Right.
Can I just say something?
Sure, absolutely.
I told Doug, and Doug was going to check with Jeff, when I sold that property, I'm envisioning what I also gave to Jeff for blueprints from the original people who had it. And I think there was utility plans, because I was asking what the little circles were and everything when I first got it and they, oh, that's manholes, that's a water line, that's that, that's that. So Doug was going, and I can call Jeff too, to speed this up as well. And I was going to call Jeff and ask if I could re-look at the maps that I had given him. And that might tell something, because it's from engineering way back when they first started building the condos. But the water lines I could see on there, in the sewer lines, because I remember asking what those were.
If, if those are asphalt, it would be nice if they were to be added, copied.
Oh, absolutely, sure. If that's what Jeff has, and I'm pretty sure that they exist, because, you know, I mean, because there are little squares on there and little circles, which I think would indicate the utilities. No buildings, they weren't buildings.
They installed it, because that was supposed to be almost like a three-phase project when you first started it, so who knows how far they went with the phases?
Right.
Because that was done almost, is it 15 years ago?
Well, they did find two manholes on my property. There were two manholes located on, on the Meto Center.
I think you've got to understand that what is concerned here, first of all, we don't want to hold up anybody in our building, in the homes.
Right.
But we have certain restrictions, number one, the health department has told us that they don't want any more dead ends. And I think you can understand that.
Sure.
So we want to make sure that the bases are covered on the village's end, the village.
Okay.
And I think that's our only concern.
Okay.
I understand that the electric is already in on that side.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
The piping, piping is there on the part way, but it's, and there is a transformer bucket there.
Okay, so we got to.
So that's, that's not a real issue.
No, but we got to deal with the water issue, that's the big one, right?
If they're going to propose to extend that project any farther, that's where we're going to have to do an upgrade, and I would like to know that now, rather than after the fact. Because then they could cost even more after the fact.
Yeah, you may have to put in bigger lines.
We would have to, definitely.
So I might be, you know, we might give us an insight of how far down the road you're looking to do the other 13.
Well, if everything went according to plan, which incidentally kind of happened, you know, it just doesn't go that way.
It doesn't go that way.
Yeah, you know, I mean, in the best of worlds, I would be getting ready to do the second phase next year. But as you can see, I'm having a hard time kickstarting this one, you know, so I'm just starting to get through this one and hopefully it would be next year. I'm hoping.
See, the biggest problem that I could see is, everything around you is private. And that's, you know, the village, it seems like, when we ended the water line, well, back before I was even working for the village, when they ended the water line and the sewer lines on Smith Street, whoever developed went a little farther, went a little farther, and if they did turn it over to the village, we accepted it, it didn't match our specs. Well, like I said, with Oakwood, when they extended that project out, I guess, the whole property ended up going like bankrupt and the bank ended up with it and then the lines never got turned over. Because it was in such a dilemma with the bank.
Yeah. Well, first of all, that's not an issue, that can be turned over.
Right, but the only thing, what I'm saying is, if, it's just the location of the three lots. It might be an excellent location to build a house, but they're not considering the location for utilities.
Why, why is that? Because they're right, right across from them, right, right on the other side?
Because of the condition, the utilities are not really available.
So.
See, eventually that water line, that eight-inch water line that goes up Smith Street should be extended out all the way to the end, should have fire hydrants up there for fire protection.
Right.
I mean, the nearest hydrant is quite a ways down the street.
But, so if those lots aren't good and they can't build a road, it sounds like I haven't got any lots to play with.
I really don't want to say that, but.
Yeah.
I guess as a developer, it would be your responsibility to extend the water line out.
To pay for it.
Right, for the water. The sewer line's already there.
Well, aren't I anyone? I assumed I was paying for the water line anyway to come across.
Coming off of Oakwood, you would be paying for that water line. Right now, the village doesn't recognize Oakwood as really a place that you can get water until it gets turned over.
Right.
And so, looking at the water line that is on Smith Street, that's undersized, along with the electric really being undersized, other than just those three lots. So I think that's the real crux right now, is want to make sure about identifying where you're going in the future and will the existing utility support that?
Okay.
So that the village can try to plan.
You're speaking out on this, aren't you?
I am.
Yeah, you got to get this message back.
I just want to stand up. Come a year from now, you decide that they don't need any on-site assistance.
Oh, no, no, and let's get them all over with right now, and I fully agree with that, you know, so we'll see how far Doug gets, you know, and what I can find from Oakwood too, for you as far as plans go. My mind's eye can almost see it, going, what is this?
If they, if they do tap off the water line on Oakwood, it would have to be extended out to if there's a proposed road or whatever, who can put a fire hydrant and have fire protection and have almost like a plan where it's going to loop back around to the backside of Oakwood if the water line moves out that way.
Right.
I wish I had some, some stuff with me now, I'm almost thinking that there's water back there, but anyway, okay, so.
Yeah, there might be water.
There is back there.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have a plan on that. And if it is a dead end, we would like it looped back around.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we're saying, would be, you know, add a bit of fire hydrants.
So if we meet all this, then is there an issue with my three lots? If we, if we meet all this?
If we meet the water lines and meet the water requirements, and make the health department happy, the sanitary sewer is already there.
Okay.
What, what is west of the third lot?
At the end of the town line, at the end of those lots.
There's a fourth lot, yeah.
There's a fourth lot west of the third lot.
Right, because there's.
Which is in the town.
Right?
No.
Okay.
There is another lot there.
Yeah, there's a potential for a fourth.
There is a fourth lot potentially within the village limit.
Correct.
Okay, so, so the choice would be then not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I thought when we looked at the map, we were discussing extending the water line up Smith Street, is that correct?
From the hydrant?
Yes.
From the corner you're talking about?
From the corner of the Oakwood driveway, the east corner of the Oakwood driveway.
Which is right here.
Okay, the water main is on the south side of Smith Street.
This is the hydrant that's down here, Oakwood, this is the water.
There's a T on it where it goes to Oakwood.
Comes up from here.
Right.
Okay.
It would be extended from here out here to this road.
We don't know, we don't know where it goes back to.
He's not talking about extending from there.
Or someplace.
Okay, but if there's.
Smith Street needs to be extended.
Right.
Between Mr. Babbie with his development and whoever else wants to develop up there, that would be one of the priorities.
Because it seems that there's, there's room for an additional lot in the west, wouldn't it make more sense to extend the utility throughout Smith Street?
Yes. You got to understand that, we talked about Mr. Babbie, there was quite a, some push contest on that one. And they went to, they would own the line and ask permission to tap onto it. But they didn't want to go to transport, they didn't find it, that would require them to sign.
But is there anything required in the local laws to have hydrants, there'd be so many?
That's our responsibility, not the property, we give them the hybrid security, they always have.
Right.
I don't think there's any distance.
Yes, there is a distance. The ISO.
I tried to get it.
Okay, but it's not in our.
Yeah, it's not above, it's something like 500 feet, but I mean, what I'm saying is, we can't put a hydrant on a four-inch line.
No, 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 useless, not useless.
Juicous.
And to clarify your question, because I just looked over on Mike's shoulder, the plan that they have now, and it's many versions different from the last one that I've seen, because I'm so far on the outskirts of this project, I would suspect that the line extension that the Charlier development would do would be from the eight-inch, just as it goes up into Oakwood, from there, put a T in, going up along the edge of Smith Street, and then there's a potential road that would go straight north. So you'd have a new eight-inch line on Smith Street, the 10 feet away that you'd need to be away from sewer, you know, the sewer's on the same line there. So it'd be like in the ditch line or a little bit further. But looking at the layout as it is now, that would make the most sense, to be continuing along Smith, rather than going into Oakwood. And then that would make, so you'd have the option of going up and then looping back into the backside of Oakwood.
Well, I'll make another suggestion, is that, I mean, we can bounce it back to our colleagues here, but it's, Doug works very closely with the village superintendent, we make sure that the village's questions and needs are covered, and so it's all we are asking.
Yeah, and I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board? All right, closing at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, September 2nd to September 9th, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions? There are any, uh, there are none, can I have a motion please? Second. Motion by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? There is no discussion, all is in favor, vote by you, sound of aye.
Aye.
Uh, bills, all copies of the bills, is there any, well, we don't have a pressure. No additions or deletions.
Make motion to pay the bill.
Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There be no discussion, all is in favor, vote by you, sound of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
For the record, I did receive Lynn Charlier her letter of intent on her three-lot subdivision on Smith Street. The next letter is a letter of correspondence from recovery boards looking ladder. We wish to inform you of a new member who was approved by our company for a probationary period of six months, and that's William Johnson from Ross's Point. Please act on this new member as soon as possible, also please be advised that the following people are no longer members of our company. Paul Ophelia, Joseph Long Spiegel and Dan Sample. As a side note to all interested parties, Ross's Point's new suppan, pumper is now available for viewing on the following website, adarand.clerk.com. Thank you for your time in these matters, Dennis Roberts, secretary.
I'll make a motion that we accept William Johnson into the company for probationary period of six months.
Second. Motion made by trustee Pentfield, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There be no discussion, all is in favor, vote by you, sound of aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carried. Reports of mayor, trustee, the mayor and trustees. First thing on the agenda tonight is the update of NEUA, NEUA, NEUA manual meeting, that I attended last week. And some very, very positive things come out of there, the, the NICE Act charge, the NICE Act charge that we are being charged for, you know, the, the update there that we all screamed about, I don't know what's there. The municipal electric association is filing a lawsuit against NICE to try to get that reduced for a rate reduction. How come, we don't know, but they've started. September 23rd of the, and we told we could make this announcement, September 23rd, the board of trustees of the power authority of state of New York approved the contract extension of municipal power. It is going to the governor on the 23rd of September for his signature. There will be a public announcement sometime around Thanksgiving. But that's not a good news. Power Authority, and I think we're aware of this, but they had quite a presentation on it. Gave, the municipal electric association, say gave $1.2 million to buy alternate energy vehicles. Right now, which not available, involved in selling. Honda and Toyota make the hybrids. They, they're still available, but the R and S contract, they will be out in October. You can get the vehicle on a 36-month loan from the power authority at zero percent. One of the things I looked at and thought of, reparations by the total electric vehicles, it's an off-road vehicle, but that's one of the things. The other thing, as the board knows, for several years I wanted to purchase a car for trips and stuff, this might be the time to do it. Until 2004 budget. Wednesday I'm going to check with IEP to see if we can get that money for that, I'm not sure. If not, we can take advantage of the zero percent loan, pay it back, give us a month's payrolls. They have four of them, four of the municipal electors that had them, had them, had them, I'm a champion of the day. Toyota, I think Kelly's knows, gets 50.7 miles per gallon gas. Everybody swears by it, Ford will be coming out with one this fall. It's quite, it's quite a thing to see, that we were allowed to drive them out there. The interesting thing is, you get to a stop light with one of these, and stop, and the engine stops. And a little light that's on that says auto start, when you step on the accelerator, it takes off on the electric motor, automatically. You manage to progress, the engine cuts in. Of course, you say gas, but the engine starts. So I'd like the board to probably consider that this month. There are, they will be on the state contract, so. They're pushing them. The federal government has issued a directive that all American automobile manufacturers come out with alternative energy vehicles. It's going to be a big push-up. Uh, next thing, we're at the power authority, we were presented a plaque from the president of the power authority for in recognition of our 100 years as a municipal electric. And it just goes on to say, for 100 years of continual electric service to public power system and a local long-term partnership with the New York State Power Authority in February 1903 to February 2003. Don't ask me to pronounce the names, because they're good Irishmen. Anyway, we have the plaque. Oh, yes. Saturday. Saturday, telephone company is celebrating their 100th anniversary. And I was asked to give a speech there, a couple minutes, and I decided that rather than a speech, that we would give a proclamation. So I have a proclamation here for the telephone company, and it says, where the Chantley Telephone Company is celebrating their 100th year anniversary. As a telephone company and as where as they have provided outstanding service to the residents of the village of Ross's Point as well as the surrounding township. And whereas the partnership shared by the Chantley Telephone Company and the village of Ross's Point has demonstrated to be a most beautiful, beneficial and excellent relationship, the all concerned therefore be around the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point. Hereby do we issue this proclamation to thank the Chantley Telephone Company for their service to the community and therefore be able to tell the George A. Rivers Mayor of Ross's Point personally deliver this proclamation out there to tell you of all on Saturday, September 20th, signed by myself. And last thing I would like the board to do to consider, while I was there, let us talk to a lot of village officials. Everybody's going to four-year terms, everybody is finding out that two-year term is not going to work. Most of the villages have all gone to four-year terms. I'd like the board to consider, March election, putting it on the ballot. I don't think it's something the board can sign, put it on the ballot for the voters, four-year term with three term limits. And with, anybody starting on a board, serving a board of voters. Give that consideration in a couple months, please. Okay, with that, I am done, trustee Menard.
Um, my first item on the agenda tonight is an update on the compact fluorescent lighting program. Within, we received notice that the bulbs will be here. And at the IEP, we sent out envelopes with addresses on them, and they're going to stop them and put, I believe, coupons in, that people will be able to go to Shazie Hardware once they get these coupons and redeem them for the fluorescent lights. Within the next couple, three weeks or so, you should be getting a coupon, so look for that. The next item is a letter from the board that we were sponsoring, or supporting the people in Wyatt Pharmaceuticals that are getting laid off. Let them read a letter that we're going to send to the governor and state officials. There, it says Wyatt Pharmaceutical, a major employer in Clinton County, recently announced that over the next two years, several hundred jobs will be eliminated from their Ross's Point plant. We are asking for your help to attempt to keep these very critical jobs in Ross's Point. The negative financial impact of these layoffs to this community, the county and the state will be significant. We are hoping that you can help. We are hoping that you can help in making sure jobs stay in the United States. Some need, something needs to be done, whether it is through tax incentives or other financial incentives. The village of Ross's Point has worked closely with Wyatt Pharmaceuticals for many years to bring about multi-million dollar infrastructure upgrades in order to provide sound and dependable water, sewer, and electrical service. The loss of jobs will have a dramatic effect on tax base to this community, therefore placing additional burden on taxpayers. Anything that you could do in keeping jobs in the North Country would be greatly appreciated. I would make a motion that we send this letter to all the state officials.
Second. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Huprow, ready to discuss it. There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all that.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Before you, back into you, trustee Huprow, may I have a minute?
I suppose.
I forgot a couple of things. You notice the poster up here on the, on the wall? I attended a meeting Tuesday morning before I had it to Alec Bay to the other meeting, on, and was invited to this Lake Solox first annual meeting, and this poster is the new fall I Love New York campaign. This will be on TV, radio announcements and stuff, that, uh, actually, protect New Ross's Point, start right off, right at the top, and go right down to Whitehall. The Lake Solox, Fountain Lake, George, and the Champlain Canal. These people have formed a nonprofit organization, and they're asking, you know, that we all be involved in it. We are involved in it in a way because of the signage that is going on, stay docked and being done by these people, the Lake Solox. So, it's something positive. Last thing I have to report, and I received a telephone call today at three-thirty, and Delaware Hudson Railroad Station was humanously approved by the historical board of State of New York, and is now a national historic site. So I'm very, very happy and pleased over that. And thank you, Mr. Huprow.
Yes, sir. First item is an update on the water project. Who am I?
Oscar.
Who's on the spot?
With the water project, um, sixteen-inch line has been connected to the water tank. We're waiting on Landmark to complete the piping within, in the interior of the tank. Um, the electrical, uh, contract for is, uh, starting to put the conduit for the interior of the tank. Landmark is gonna be back, supposed to be back today, but I expect it'll be back tomorrow. I'll continue with the interior piping. Um, so right now, we have the piping up to the tank, and we have the piping away from the tank, um, connected into the system. Once they have the piping complete, inside the tank, we'll be able to backflush through the sixteen-inch line and clean out all the debris, disinfect it, and, uh, pressure test it. Tomorrow, luck is gonna be moving into the village, uh, parking lot, relocating, uh, sanitary manholes. Board crew's gonna be, um, on site, probably tomorrow afternoon, they'll have all set up, and they'll start the bore in under Lake Street, right in front of the, uh, village offices. So that's where we are with that. Today, we had one, um, water service we had to correct, that the electrical department, uh, found a mishap that we had missed up on West Clinton Street, and the contractor went back over and we corrected that today. So on the water project, we're going along smoothly, but we're gonna be tearing up your yard in, uh, village offices for the next couple of weeks, as we get closer and closer to the plant and making the connection to the plant. Any questions?
Do we have a plan for the parking, for the residents who may be coming to the office?
My understanding is, is that the parking in front of the, uh, village offices will be utilized, even though it's quite, uh, limited for the day-to-day customers of the office. And I know someone from the board, I believe, or the water committee was gonna talk with the church about possibly using that, uh, gravel area on the other side of the, you should see though.
But the, the customer should park to the left where the downside staircase.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Believe that you can still park in the back.
Right.
Yes. But you'll have.
Right, you're gonna have, you're just one in.
In and out will be all on the north side of the.
Are we gonna sign that for two-way traffic, so people will, will know? Do you know?
Probably we should put a.
I think we should put a two-way traffic on there.
Jump over the top of that sign, just.
Yeah, or just take, you just unscrew the other one and take it out.
Just cover it.
Yeah, I would say you just cover it, so.
Because people should use real caution of pulling in around the building, because there really is quite a blind spot there, so.
Still got, still got two concerns. Number one is whether sixteen inches across Maple Street and where, and where we go. Review Johnson, we talked about the zigzag thing.
Yep.
More than John?
John, review almost.
As Doug indicated, last meeting, and written reports, sketches coming to Maple Street crossing. Apologize if it's supposed to be here today, but, um, it'll be here by Wednesday. The zigzag piping, uh, as the board directed, I met with the Clinton County Health Department Friday, uh, last week, the week before, um, reviewed the basic need, maybe the overall, reasons why that was required, and we've reviewed the code requirement within, um, gave him the design of the zigzag piping and a comprehensive report on how it's properly sized, which I believe the board has been provided with. Got it down the fill, uh, the day that we met with the, with the fellow at the health department. Basically, presented the village's position that, uh, even though it's, uh, even though it's, uh, required by the code, perhaps based construction is more appropriate than intended. It was a pretty good agreement, and it was pretty well received by the county health department. He was going to review the materials in detail last week. I phoned him through four times, four times last week. He apparently was on the road quite a bit, um, and I haven't really made any contact with him because of that, however, um, I will pursue it again. Pursue him again this, today, you know, pushing tomorrow, and if necessary, maybe by Wednesday, work out any details. The general impression that I received was that, from his office, was that, uh, he was pretty happy with the plan and willing to endorse basing the construction as, as necessary.
Uh, what, among the points, the things they agreed was to be accepted out there?
Sent the board a letter.
Sorry to let you wait.
Yeah, it's okay, it's, it's time of year, it's, it's pretty hectic.
Was the five thirty seven week on?
September fifth is the report to the Clinton County Health Department, it's addressed to them. Basically, we sent several copies to the village as well. There was quite a bit of confusion, and I look back through the old village board minutes, and I could understand why the board was confused, because I myself is a little confused. But basically, using the assumption that the tank would not be drained in a winter tank scenario, and using summer, uh, water quality, uh, temperature and pH, as well as the elevated level of chlorine, very similar to what we did when the old tank was drained this year. The final design came up with five hundred and seventy feet of that pipe.
Three sixty seven feet.
Yes. Basically, one little two-hundred-and-eight-five foot long, and would fit reasonably well on the site. There was a lot of discussion over the past month or two about, uh, how much was required, and there was a lot of back and forth between myself and the board, myself and Doug, and myself and Gary, and I thought it appropriate that we summarize that up in that letter, but, which I did, um, and hopefully the board has an opportunity to review that in the next couple of weeks. If you have any questions, um, about that, but I think it's, it gets kinda scientific and it's, I don't mean to, it's probably not a good thing to say. It gets a little complicated, so, unless you deal with these types of things on a daily basis, you can become extremely confused. But obviously, it's the health department's job to make sure that you comply with the code, and it's my job to make sure we do it as cost-effective as we can. But I'd, I hope that I can get together with John, because him and board, uh, pursue it with all the, which typically is, uh, takes a little more documentation, but they're generally pretty happy.
And you said there's, there's something on the way, uh, concerning the maple tree thing, Doc?
Basically, it's a, it's a summary of the options that are available to you, as well as the analysis of the insulation and the soil element, and all of that good stuff.
John, on the, on the zigzag pipe.
Yes.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it was my understanding when this was mentioned, that this was an alternate comparing the other tank down. If we put the zigzag piping in, if we take the tank offline, can we still run without boil water?
That would be the intent, though.
So that would be enough contact time.
Correct.
In that piping, zigzag piping, to run the village, or whatever, without going to boil water?
Correct, and the, and the primary reason for that was to avoid the boil water in order, was not, I mean, it certainly would be conducive to the whole industry.
Right.
The fact that it be avoided, and that's why I, and took it upon myself, pushed that.
So this is gonna act like the second tank.
Essentially, replace it as far as pouring in contact.
So you were breaking the assumption.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically the, the, remember, as far back as nineteen ninety-nine, that's why this whole project developed, was to correct that.
Correct according to contact, because we were missing that by whatever, a few minutes, whatever, we, I just wanted to make sure that we were putting this pipe in, that if, if that tank went down, we were still gonna have that water without the boil water. So that was basically, when we take this tank, the old tank down, this zigzag is gonna replace that old tank.
And then, and, and basically, just to back up a little bit, we had talked about thirty-two-hundred feet, twenty-four-hundred feet, and all this stuff. Those are different operating scenarios. Where, where the five hundred and seventy feet comes from is, assuming that the village wouldn't, uh, in the middle of the winter, drain the tank down for normal maintenance, I mean, just practical assumptions. Whereas thirty-two-hundred feet, or whatever, twenty-four-hundred, depending on which meeting minutes you're at, um, those were generated off the cuff, and perhaps I guess for the, for the board, off for another week, but, uh, I'm just totally confused, the situation right now. Uh, it certainly wasn't intentional.
Is that it?
Uh, no, there is one other thing that I, as dark as the news is all the time, I would, uh, have one bright note to report. It's pretty small, but it is a bright note. In March of two thousand, we applied for a permit for under Lake Street. February of two thousand and three, this year, we submitted a whole other pile of documentation for the permit, um, on the Friday, state of New York issued the permit so that we could drill tomorrow. As small as the little angle is, we made it over there.
That's all, Mr. Menard. Thank you, trustee Huprow. Trustee Penfield.
John, are you gonna talk about Maple Street tonight, or no?
Yes.
Okay, so I can wait on that? Okay. All right, yeah. Two things. One of them is a special notice that the zoning board of appeals scheduled meeting of October thirteenth, which is a Monday, is canceled and will be held on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and three, at four thirty P M. And at that time, they will be hearing, uh, they will have, be having a public hearing for two different applications. One of them is a special use or change of use permit required to open a restaurant at the former Amex Building located on the corner of Lake Street, Route nine B, and Route two. And the second public hearing will be held for an area variance for Shazie Hardware to construct a storage building on their property. And the public is welcome to attend. That's all I have.
Wow. Thank you, trustee Penfield. Uh, trustee Gerbers is not here, but, um, the update on the sewer project, everything's at a standstill?
Nope. Pretty much, but we are working on the punch list. Um, going up and down, uh, Maple Street, addressing pieces of sidewalk that have bicycle tracks. Pine Street, we're correcting that curbing that they, uh, uh, put in incorrectly, did some, uh, road pavement patching on Pearl Street, Pratt, uh, street intersection, um, Champlain Street intersection. We still have various lawns that, uh, need to be addressed with topsoil and seeding, um, and that's on hold until John spits out the maple reconstruction. So, that's what we're doing on it right now, which is limited.
No word yet.
On the sewer project?
No.
Any questions with a little bit that I had about?
Thank you, Eric. That's it, unless the Maple Street is all yours, John.
Quick report on Maple Street. Basically, the project was advertised for bid, um, it's gonna be received on September twenty-third. Missed office at four o'clock P M, so anybody that's interested is more than welcome. We're going to have a pre-visit conference on Wednesday this week at four o'clock A M. To go along with that, basically, I am, I'm going to hopefully sit down with Brian on Wednesday, review the final details with him, make sure he's comfortable with what is included in the contract. I believe through various eight million boxes over the last two weeks, I have his, what he would like to see in there, um, but I, I'm gonna sit down with him and make sure he's in full agreement. I did, our office did, uh, forward the advertisement to about, uh, twenty-five or thirty contractors over the weekend. I believe it was in the paper maybe Saturday or Monday. In any event, uh, there's not a lot of this type of work out there, so it should be pretty good pricing for the village. Hopefully, everybody will be satisfied that the project is done. Hopefully, everybody will be satisfied that the project is done.
Any indication from luck, running for the side of sidewalk?
I have not. I talked to Ted Locke a couple of times today, but I have not, I didn't discuss the sidewalks, whatever.
I just, I just heard it, so, nothing. We know it's out there, because it's not. That's it?
I have another question.
Goodbye.
So, I know Doug at the last meeting read an approximate timeline, and I know it's just approximate, and I understand that, but the bids are due back on the twenty-third, so when would you anticipate work beginning, John?
I would think that they would be ready to, wanting to begin work following the meeting at the very end.
Because my, I guess my curiosity, just did talk to the people around the village, I don't think the residents of Maple Street fully understand what else they have done this year before the bill was finally paid. Could you just give a real brief description of, just really quick, what, what is going to be happening?
Oh, sure. Basically, from the vote we received in the public meetings, and various discussions about drainage problems and all that stuff, there is this small section of storm sewers to be installed between Pine Street and Champlain Street and the west side.
Okay.
The rest of those problems, basically, right now, most of that water winds its way into the sanitary system. Along with that, the, whatever concrete pavement is left over underneath, the asphalt, whatever's left after the water in the sewer and the electrical project, all that material will be removed. The new stone, base course will be installed, and the new asphalt.
Question, only base coat this year?
That is my understanding, that that would, because I or Brian have done that way, and certainly that seems to be...
If we have something happen, like I'll have to tell a brand-new road.
Can the concrete, John, run approximately, that's, that's not the length of the street though, sorry, right? The concrete, the, the...
The concrete is, what remains of the concrete, basically, from all the excavations that have been done, is basically through Chapman Street south to Champlain. Ripped up in a lot of places, and left in a lot of other places, and so that's primarily why you can just overlay the whole street, and use the street on it.
And the reason I'm asking you this question is because, just in talking to some of my neighbors, and some of the people on the street, I think all that they are expecting is paving. And I just want to make sure they were prepared for more digging to occur before the paint.
There is a lot more digging to occur.
Right, okay.
However, it should be, it's of a little different nature than the digging in the past. Basically, in the past, residents have experienced trenches, whereas this is, would be an excavation of full width of the road, followed by full width pavement, with full width fresh stone.
And how about traffic on the street during that time? What do you do about that?
It will be a headache. Basically, about the only way to accomplish the work in a reasonably efficient manner is to close the street during working hours, block by block, so to speak, similar to what has occurred, basically, during all the other constructions. Obviously, emergency vehicles, ambulance, and a lot of stuff would be given priority. However, it would be advantageous having both of the residency into the contract here, during the working hours, they'll have to be in certain sections, very limited in length, closed off, and men allowed to work and save men. It's just very difficult, expensive to maintain traffic in such a manner.
Oh, absolutely, right. Would it be worth most hits for lots of traffic on the way, or, I know you've got the red road signs up, but, I'm talking about from one end to the other, basically.
Yes. And that basically will happen.
Okay, good.
I mean, to some extent, you want to, if they're working way down in the south end, there wouldn't be a lot of need to disrupt traffic on the north end.
Right.
To just be trafficked. The basic theory, I guess, in maintenance and protection of traffic, virtually any project, is you try to accommodate users on the highway to an extent practical.
Would you recommend, okay, would you recommend letting the school know, or for busing purposes?
That's, that's included in the, has been included in past pipe projects.
Okay, okay, thank you.
As a matter of fact, I would kind of hope that we can review the bus route with the school, what, you know, that third school, maybe we, maybe a little back and forth here with the needs.
Is that how long, John, do you think, rough estimate for the whole project?
I would think that this fall, we've got about six or eight weeks at most that you're going to be able to work there. I mean, it's pretty hard to be able to, it's one of the things I wanted to talk over with Brian, I don't know how long it would take, and I want to make sure that we have a reasonable schedule out of contractors, so it doesn't drag up till August during the grass, or that sort of thing.
Are we going to see pavement this year? Pavement this year?
That's the intent. Good pavement.
Thank you, John. Carol, you got anything? I'll come. Phil does.
Why is that?
Brian?
The only thing I have is, we were trying to work with Wyatt for a scheduled outage, and we wanted to do it first or second week of October, and it's pushed back to the third or fourth week, and still wait for Wyatt people to activate, so we can't have an outage on Saturday morning. It would be probably from six to eleven, so we can tie over the south end of the village onto the new line to the...
I hear a word again, John. Eric?
Doug wanted to apologize, he had a family bit of a crisis, or else he wouldn't have been up here this evening reviewing most of the stuff I reviewed. One thing he did ask me to pass on to the board, at the request of the mayor, the village engineer, his review and Fred Wright's, Fred Wright, I guess, is a particular problem, but that whole area in behind those houses, the drainage, how to handle that, how to get it out of there, Two Smith Street. Village engineer's reviewing the parking pattern at the civic center, and provided a planning board regulation feedback for Mike to review at Kelly's request, and what else did he say? Substation. He's doing some more calculations on that, due to the fact...
I need the blueprints, but it underground like yesterday.
Blueprints underground for...
To put, not underground, I'm sorry, put foundations for the substation.
He's working on that presently, right now.
We need to get started now. We need to get going up there.
A lot of loads...
And I talked to Kirk, and Kirk says Doug's got to move on this.
And he is moving on it right now, and one thing he asked me to relay was that the final things he's working on is loads and calculations that he didn't have prior to a couple of weeks ago. And he's working on the final foundations, he told me exactly what it was, but I didn't write it in my chicken scratcher, but he is presently working on that, and he's talking with Kirk.
So we depend on that, Brian, that we can get started up there.
Right.
We want to start this week. You've got, you've got quite a bit of work up there to do on the foundations, and we want to get in for a little weather.
I know that's on the top of Doug's list, that's all I can say.
That is top priority.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I have just one thing. Earlier this summer, we had a little go-around with portable swimming pools and...
No.
Phil asked the village attorney, Mr. Bernane, for an interpretation of the code law, which I sent him, and he sent back this letter, which I'd like to read, it's very short, says, "Letter confirms our telephone conversation of Wednesday, August twentieth, two thousand and three, during which we discussed the above referenced issue. Enclosed herewith for your review and comment, please find a copy of Appendix G in the New York State Building Code, which addresses swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. In reviewing this appendix, it is my opinion that Mr. Tetro is acting in accordance with the New York State Building Code requiring building permits, electrical inspections, and barriers with respect to swimming pools, which come under the definition of swimming pools in the code." To that end, what I would like to say, all these pools are down now, these temporary pools, it's not an issue anymore, and it won't be an issue till next year. What I would propose is that we send each person a letter that has one of these pools with a copy of this letter, saying that they do need permits for them, they do need, do need to be inspected, and they have to comply with the code. And if we can't get compliance, then we just go the legal route, I guess. I need the board's input on this, as to what they want me to do.
It's the law, is what...
It, it's the law. I mean, my job is to send these letters, and make sure these people are notified of what the code is. After that, I mean, it's up to the board if you want to carry this farther, if you want to drop it, or what you want to do with it.
Well, I don't think we have to act tonight, if the board takes us under consideration, and we've got a couple months to discuss this.
Well, nobody's going to be swimming in a couple months.
No, that's right. If they are, I don't know, I won't go there. They form like this, you know?
George, can I ask you one question, or two questions about that?
Sure.
Um, would, would a permit be required every year?
No.
A one-shot permit?
Right.
A one-time permit for the...
The permit itself is a, it's a village, it's a decision the board makes to, it's a way of paying for the services. The only thing that's required is the electrical inspections, and they meet the code.
And that would be a one-shot?
Right.
One, one inspection, and you're set?
I think the sad thing here, or just the sad, this was overlooked for several years. And it's known, and I'm not putting blame on anybody or anything, but I can understand the frustrations of the people to have those students out there now, that have had it for five years, and all of the subject they need to hear from this. And I think everybody can understand that, so I think it's something that we, the board, have to sit down and work out. Enough said of that subject, and thank you, Mike, for anything else?
That's it.
I did have one other thing, George, to slip through the cracks. I would like to take this opportunity and thank Carol for her assistance over the last couple of weeks, or actually, three or four weeks. She's helped me out tremendously, telling me and pointing me in the right direction. Sometimes it gets pretty hectic, it's nice...
I've got a crazy question, John.
It's nice to not have, but ask five people just to go to one person.
Well, can we collect something for her, guy?
Jerk!
I wanted to say crazy. And at this time, I would like to thank Mary Rascal for all the work she's done on getting this thing in for the National Storage Site. She did all the paperwork and all the research, and she's been a big part of the work. Okay, with that, I, believe it or not, if five after eight, I'd like a motion for adjournment. Motion made, second, in discussion, no discussion, no favor.
Aye.
No opposed, no caring, thank you.